Prepare for that. Don't wear the veil. If you wear the veil, this contract is an oath taken. If you betray the oath, it will catch up with you. When you break a horse, it's like a curse. It's like a curse. That is why many marriages don't work. For thanks be to God. God gave us a message that offers us remedy on how to marry our wives and how to live with them. Marriage does not belong to Ghana. Neither does it belong to Nigeria. Out of your traditions. Listen to me. There was no Ghanaian, no Nigerian, no American that ever thought of the idea of marriage. Marriage was an idea of God. It was God who said in Genesis, chapter 2. He gave man everything. He gave him car. He gave him house. He gave him property. He gave him beautiful gardens. He gave him different kind of animals, exotic wildlife and ocean life. Yet God said even with all this, there is not yet a help. Meat for man. Brother Raymond, your car cannot replace the position of this woman in your life. Your house, your job, everything you have cannot take the place or position of Paulina in your life. Because when God looked at you, he saw you with all your wealth and everything you have. He said, "Yet they are not sufficient to be unhelped unto you." Then God said, "I will make him unhelped." And the help, the help he made comes out of his sister Paulina. So she is irreplaceable. You that are married, if you are sitting close to your wife, look at her and appreciate her because she is your best asset. That is why, that is why we are taught that after salvation, the next best thing that God can give a man is a good wife. Is this sinking in? Is this sinking in? So there are things you should do for her. Don't do for your car. I'm using car because car competes with wife nowadays. Hallelujah. You love him. Now it was God who saw this need. And he offered somebody to meet that need. Now, for this home to really stand, if each of you must take your position. The earth is peaceful today because nature took its position. The moon stayed in its orbit. The sun stayed on its side. Vegetation life stayed in their position as the Lord made them. And as long as they keep their position, unconsciously, they are keeping the earth peaceful. Science by geography told us that if moon, if the moon will shift from its orbit, the Atlantic Ocean will overrun the earth. So the moon has to stay in its position in order to be a check upon the sea and the waters. So that no matter how much it rains, it can never give us the effect of the days of Noah. Are you following? That is the way God arranged nature. And that is the way God arranges program. Precepts must be upon precepts. Line must be upon line. Each creation must take their position. My brother, you have a position in this union. My sister, you have a position in this union. I'd like to call your attention, my sister, to your position. Before I come to your husband. That was the way the scripture began each. He said, "You as a wife, your position is to reverence your husband in all things. No exception." Are you hearing me? Are your wives hearing me? Hallelujah. And your reverence must be the type that the church is showing our Lord Jesus Christ. Amen. Reverence is a deep word. Deeper than respect. Reverence is akin to worship. Hear it and hear well. Scripture does not joke with words. If you understand or understood English, remember God is the creator of all languages. He says what he means and he means what he says. If he tells you to reverence your husband, let him be shut as this. As long as you accept his choice, you must come under complete obedience. If you want to have joy, if you want to have peace, if you want to have heaven on earth in your home. In this relationship, he is the head. You are the body. So, as both of you came today, God tells Brother Raymond, "I don't need your body any longer." He remove his head. He throw away his body. He tells Sister Paulina, "I don't need your head any longer." "He remove your head, throw it away and take your body." He now places the head of Raymond upon the body of Paulina and the two has become one. Are you with me? So Brother Raymond, you don't have any body from today other than here. That is why all those things that you have done to your body to look nice and presentable, multiply it several times, you must now begin to do it for this one. This becomes your obligation. Before you eat, she must eat. Before you get cloth for yourself, he must have. She becomes your primary torch, not a secondary torch. This is your body. Do you beat your body? Do you kick your body? When you do that in the open place, what will people call you? Madman. Any Ghanaian man that is beating his wife is a madman. I don't care who you are. You are very mad. Your lunatism is on a high level. You need repentance. You need salvation. This is not an object of kicking. I know you will not do it. I know you are a believer. But I'm speaking for genera. I have said I'm going to speak to all using you as my case study. This is not an object forbidden of practicing boxing. If you want to practice boxing, go to stadium. Let them give you a sparring partner. This is something to be loved. This is something to be cherished. The Bible says, "No man ever yet hated his own body but nourished and cherished." God has given you something to nourish, to cherish. I'm coming back to you. It's just that we cannot talk about her without talking about you. So be bearing with me. But my sister, God said you should reverence this man. And it doesn't give you a limit. He said reverence her in all things. And I'm saying that your spirituality is going to be measured by the amount of special songs you come to sing in the church. It's not going to be measured by your attitude to help us clean the tavern. Or help us cook for the minister. Your spirituality is going to be measured by your service, your devotion to this man. That's what the Bible says. Some of you respect your pastors, but you disregard, shame on you. Your husband is your curriculum for assessment before God. If you fail in your service to your husband, all your service in the church is a sacrifice of fools. Uh huh. Swallow it and digest it. It will help you. It will help you. Are you following me, Sister Paulina? Hallelujah. So how do I reverence my husband? Let me make it easy for you. You see in the head, you have several faculties. Look at your husband. Point, tell me some things you can find in the head. Mama, is this your husband? Praise the Lord. Look at him. Tell me some things you find in this head. Here we have practical Christianity. In this head, do you find highs there? You saw highs there? The nose is there. The mouth is there. Mama is saying yes. It's in the head. Hallelujah. So it follows that this union, this family, the eye of this family, the sight of this family is this man. The ear of this family is this man. The nose perception of this family is this man. The mouth spokesperson of this family is this man. The intelligence, the brain of this family is this man. So for you, this man, what is this man? And he must be ready to make concession. Between Christ and the church, the church does not argue with Christ. The church takes the words of Christ and submits. The only time you can take a pause is if he wants you to do something ungodly. That is against God. Because God owns your soul. He owns your body. Do you agree with me? You have to agree with me because you don't own your life. The same God who owns her owns you. And if this union will be peaceful and succeed, both of you must be connected to God. So the new de- did you learn from her? Did you hear what I told her? So whatever, no matter, they say women are strong, some women can be strongly opinionated. You are not ready for marriage. Let me tell you clearly, you are not ready for marriage. That is the reason you have PhD. But you score F9 in marriage. Because you are not willing to be submissive. You will remain a failure. Because that is not God's design for marriage. If you want to succeed in the use of a product, consult the manual of operation. Lord is the manufacturer of marriage. His manual of operation is the Bible. And it's Bible that I'm preaching to you. You say it is odd, this is new. It's because your pastors are not teaching you the truth. Here, here, we don't want to be socially correct. We want to be spiritually correct. This is what we preach everywhere. If we are in America, this is what we preach to them. In Canada, this is what we preach to them. In United Kingdom, this is what we preach. In Europe, all over, this is what we preach. In Africa, this is what we preach. Because Jesus Christ is the same yesterday, today and forever. It doesn't matter who you are. It doesn't matter who you are. No matter how sophisticated you are, you are not above the word of your Savior, of your God, of your Lord. Humble yourself so you can enjoy your family. No matter how rich you are, no matter how highly placed you are, you will never be above the word of God. Amen. Oh yes. Is it going well with you? It's going well with you? Or you have problem with it? You can't even have problem with this one because you are a believer. Hallelujah. Mama, sometimes God can reveal something better to you than even your husband. I am not disputing that. And I am not discounting it. But no matter how strong your conviction is, about your revelation, you cannot use a tool of argument to win your husband. I'm speaking for all of you. Argument weakens the fabric of love. Mama, arguments destroy marriages. God has given you a better weapon. If you have not been using it, start from today. Amen. The better weapon of a woman is prayer on her knees. First, you must appreciate the responsibility God has placed upon your husband to be the intelligence of the family. So in order not to mislead the family, he needs your support. Your greatest support is prayer on your knees every day for your hardship. When he's going out, you must accompany him with prayer. When I'm going out or traveling on mission, my wife will stand at the door. I'd like to hear it all the time. You will say, "I bid you with God's favor." When you learn the virtues of prayer, even though the man is not seeing what you are saying, by the virtue of prayer, you will win many battles. Let me give you an example, Sister Paulina. There was a time I sat down. I looked at 10 decisions we have taken as a family. And in those 10 decisions, I seem to have a position which my wife never argued about. Even though she told me what she felt. But her whole language is, "That's okay." And I enjoy that. But you know what? When we looked at the 10 items, it went the way she suggested. Only two was the way I suggested. So I said, "What is happening?" I remember, this was what I said on this. And I didn't argue with you. So how come it went this way? He said, "I use remote control on you." I asked her, "What kind of a remote control?" He said, "If I tell you, I will leak my secrets." Later she told me that all she did was to realize that my head also has a head. So if my head is not listening to me, I went to his head. So it must have been your head that talked to you. And I said, "Wow, what a weapon." Use that as your weapon. My brother, let me come to you a little. Reverence is easy for a woman who is in love. I'm giving you their secrets. I have them as mother. I have one as wife. And I have two of them as my biological daughter. One is married, one is still on the way. And I have several of them as adopted children. So I know their secrets. When a woman is in love, she is in love. You can see in the book of Ephesians 5 here. Do you see that Christ did not tell Sister Paulina to love her husband? Did you notice that? What he told her was to reverence her husband. Because as you see her, she's already in love potion. When a woman hasn't accepted the choice of a man, when you people are doing younger like this, it's because you haven't seen the person you really love. When you see the person you really love on arms down, this is how you will be crumbling under love. It's the same way with all of them, younger. And it is a good thing. It will take the man to be, you know, to be sliding the brake a bit, slow. The woman wants to express herself the moment she finds love. This is why God doesn't need to tell her, "Love Raymond." Raymond is already a love. But God told you something. Brother Raymond, did you want to hear it? He said, "You must love this sister" as Christ. Love the church, wait for it and gave himself. You must give yourself. For this cause shall a man leave his father and his mother. This woman is not a competitor with your mom. Where is your mom? Point to mama. Mama, God bless you, mama. God gave you a daughter today, not a competitor. So don't say, "The things, the things I can't do for my mama, they want me to do for her." In your mouth? There is no basis for comparison. Mother is mother. Wife is wife. The commandment to you is love your wife, obey your parents, love your wife. All the love that you can ever have for a woman, today you are giving it to one person. There's no woman on earth that you can love like this woman. I'm giving you the scripture. Christ loved the church and he did what? Gave himself. The level of giving demanded even his own life. You say, "What are you saying preacher? What you have heard him said?" Your level of sacrifice must be so deep that puts your own life secondary and our own life primary. I say it with all sense of responsibility. Do you know the scripture called marriage a mystery? Did we not read it together? He said, "I speak of Christ and the church." Look, let me tell you. The reason we are struggling in marriage is because we are trying to do something whose basis of measurement is Christ. Yet, we are trying to do it without that Christ. You are bound to fail. Are you listening to me? If you must do things as Christ is doing it, then you need the kind of life or the nature that Christ has to succeed as Christ. That is why marriage is not for novies. Marriage is really for those who are spiritual. The qualification of marriage for marriage is the new birth. You've got to have a nature of Christ to succeed as Christ. This is why some people can marry for thirty to forty years. And they still went for divorce. They've traveled the world and the edge together. They've gone to see the seven wonders of the world. They've gifted themselves very expensive gifts. They've spent wonderful moment in luxurious vacations. And yet, after some years, they broke apart. You say they don't love each other? They love. But the quantity of love they have is what is at stake. You cannot rely on filial love, attraction love to succeed in marriage. You know why? Time will test it. This mama wasn't like this the day she got married. If she brought a picture house when she married, how many years, mama? Thirty-one years ago. I'm sure she didn't look like this thirty-one years ago. This man didn't look like this thirty-one years ago. She was a sweet sixteen. Now she's fat. Now her tummy is big. Everything is like this, like this. Oh, yes. But guess what? No matter what change comes away, his own eyes too, the cornea in his eyes must be dimming and adjusting to keep seeing her the way she saw her thirty-one years ago. Brother Paulinas, if you marry light complexion, it is possible. When she gives birth to the first first and second children, her complexion will change. If, if it is kin you marry, you are in trouble. I know it by experience. When they start motherhood, a lot of things change, a lot of things will start changing. Even sometimes their dentition can start changing. They will come to a moment in life that they call that time of life. Coming into menopausal experience where they don't even understand their own body again. And even family relations become impossible for many months, many years. What will keep you with her? And yet, in the, in the marriage of Christ, you must still be that gallant lover like you were thirty-one years ago. If you cannot do that, you are not in a true union. It's a cosmetic affair. It's an artificial relationship. It will never make heaven. When you understand the depth of marriage, you will know it's not for novices. A lot of people will go to hell on the platform of marriage. And for those of you who are hypocritical, you said, "I'll be managing her at home, but get a sweet sixteen outside." You are an adulterer. It doesn't matter your position in the church. If you are a dickin' in the church, you are an adulterous dickin'. If you are a pastor, you are an adulterous pastor. You have no way to hide this money. Hallelujah. She must be the only one. Husband, love your wife. Why would you have to love her? She is the one that undergo changes that gives her herself a sense of insecurity. As slim as she is. She might become fatter than this space in the course of time. Then she will start thinking, "Is Raymond, does Raymond still love me?" This is why you must tell her all the time, "I love you." It gives a sense of reassurance. If she's getting fatter and she's becoming insecure, tell him, tell her, your eyes are narrowing too. You are not seeing the size. You are seeing her like this. All the time. Let me tell you. Whatever your thought or reflection of a wife is, she will become it. But to become it, she needs your love. When you truly love her, you will bear with her. You will be patient. You will be accommodating. You will empathize. And that becomes the energy that will eventually give her a lift to be who you want her. You say, "Why do you say that?" Christ as a bride of a reflection. She might be filled with the Holy Ghost. She's not ready-made for you. Because you have your taste and preferences of how you want your wife to be. Even in the order of your house. Some of you, you like arranging your things. Sorry, my brother. Watch this. Not like this, like this. She came from a background where she arranged things like this. So when she thinks she's, she's doing well in the house, she's going to position it like this. First time you come back, you change it. She didn't get the message. Another day, you meet it like this, you change it. But at that time, you have to be daft to not know what I'm saying. That is wrong. Whatever your preference is, don't forget you are not marrying a baby. You are marrying an adult who is already set in her way. And her ways are not necessarily wrong. It's just that she must adjust to your taste and style. That is who we wear in the hands of Christ. Christ wanted a glorious church without spots, without wrinkles. Nobody can present to Christ that kind of a church. You have to gift yourself your gift. Christ knew that nobody could present it to her him. Then he decided to walk towards presenting it to himself. He took his life. He took his time. He took his honor. Offered everything. Shared his blood to get a bride of his reflection. That he can say, "Now, I can see all my desires in this figure." That is what you must do. It will take your time. It will take your sweat. It will burn your energy while she will get there. Are you with me? This is why you need to love your wife. The love you must have must go beyond filial. It must be the divine love. Because filial love gets disappointed. She can be disappointed in you. You can be disappointed in her. If that's all you have, you will be pulling apart. But when you have the love of God in 1 Corinthians, chapter thirteen, the love that can only come to your heart by the Holy Ghost, it covers a multitude of weaknesses, of mistakes, of errors. Jacob served fourteen years for a woman. And the Bible said, "It was like nothing to him." You know the energy that drives the service? It will be nothing to you if you truly have love for her. Take your position. Love your wife. This woman will reverence you automatically if she sees something real. That's what the revealed word taught. You must live as a son of God at home. Do you know? The Bible says, "A woman is not permitted to teach, to preach, or to usurp authority." It's in your Bible. It's not just for the Corinthians. Because I've not seen an epistle for the Ghanaians in the Bible. It is for everybody. It's in the book of Peter. It's in the book of Timothy. It's in the book of Corinthians. So suit yourself. Choose anyone. I've not seen an epistle to the Ghanaians or to the Nigerians in the Bible. For all epistles, all scriptures is given by the inspiration of God and is profitable for doctrine, for instruction, in righteousness. That a child of God may be thoroughly furnished unto all good works. If you are a woman preacher, repent. You are out of your place. This is where I'm going. The Bible says, "They are not permitted to speak, to teach, or to usurp authority." He said, "If she will learn anything as a married woman, she shouldn't go to the pastor." The Bible says she should go to her husband. That is why you must be a son of God. Pastor, 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 pastor. No, sir. If the husband does not have the answer, let the husband go to the pastor, get the answer, and bring it home. That is what the word says. I'm preaching the Bible. You come show me the difference. But don't bring cock and bull stories. When the Corinthians women were getting proud, who told you? Show me that in the Bible. If they were proud then, they are prouder, prouder now. Now that they are propagating feminism. Evil spirits. So you must not be a novice. Let God lay that order. He referred to the beginning. He said, "Sister Paulina, in the beginning, it wasn't you the word of God came to." Go and read Genesis. Before the woman appeared, every teaching of life about the garden, about everything, God concluded it with Adam before the woman came. Show me in the Bible. There was nowhere anyone ever spoke to the woman until the fall. It was to the man he spoke. It was after the fall when he was bringing judgment, he had to address each person. So everything Eve thought she knew, and she was trying to teach the serpent, she learnt it from her husband. This is why marriage is not for novices. I hope I'm not offending you, baby. I'm just preaching the Bible. If it sounds strange to you, I've challenged you. Go read your Bible again. You've been reading it with the gogul of your denomination. Now read it with the high self of God. Read it very clearly, and you will find lesson. I'm closing now. Both of you, there must be agreement. Nothing must pull you apart. My brother, truly you are the head. And she's the body. Well, let me tell you something. The head needs the body. Don't ever make your wife unhappy. Don't make your husband unhappy. Don't hurt each other. You could have moments that you may not see things eye to eye. But don't let the sound. We have bad manners husband today. If you are here, let me talk to you. Bad manners husband. You know what they do? They can keep marries for one or two weeks. Won't talk to your wife. Won't eat her food. Shame on you. Uh-huh. Silence in court tonight. You are doing baby things. When we were in kindergarten those days, we will see we first talk to each other. You are not grown. That is why the woman is finding difficult to respect you. Whether it is you that offended or she's the one that offended, you have a responsibility as a son of God to bring back the right atmosphere in your house. Are you with me, my brother? Because nowadays, we have fidibotu husbands. Husbands that are not yet wed from their mother's breast. Proclaiming husbands. Any simple disagreement which you are prone to have, it becomes an issue. The woman will say, "Good morning, dear." And you are a man. You are a jellyfish. You say, "Me, me, I like waging psychological war." You are unconverted. If the pastor, if the pastor can't use that word, permit me. I'm using it. They are unconverted. You are waging psychological war on your wife. You are wicked. Some women don't know how to keep marriages. When you refuse to greet them, it's like you are destroying them. And you find it, that is the way to get her. You cannot use an ungodly weapon to bring peace in your house. Repent! And you don't know you undoing yourself. Let me tell you. There must be agreement. Look at it this way. This is Ed. This is Raymond. This is Paulina. The head sits down, conceive many things. Tomorrow, we shall go to Kumasi. Buy this. Buy that. Bring it to Takoradi. Sell it. Get thirty percent Kumasi. The head needs the body. Leg to move to Kumasi. The head conceived it for it is the body that drives it. And when we get to Kumasi, it is the hands that we buy to gather the things. Is that right? Now, if there's a disagreement between the head and the body, everything the head conceived will rot in inside the head. Because the body will rebel. Go to Kumasi now. Be going. When you get there, multiply your profits. That is a revelation you must ask. That for this family to work, for this family to progress, for this family to prosper, to make it, to have enlargement, expansions, there must be agreement. Jesus said, "If two shall agree concerning a thing, and call upon me, I will never withhold it." The closest two that I know is a man and his wife. Families don't prosper because they fight more than they agree. So the home is not peaceful. The atmosphere is toxic. And when they start raising children, they start raising courage, some fighting children. God will judge you. Because if you make any of those little ones to stumble by a wrong influence, Jesus said, "Hell awaits you." He's in the wash. He said, "It would be better for you not to have been born." May the Lord help you. We can continue till evening. But I hope you find some wisdom. Some of you. maybe this is the tonic you need to put life into your marriage. May the Lord help you. Amen? Brother Raymond, more is on you. Let your wife see something real. Let him see the Son of God in the church as the same at home. Sometimes, some of us, brothers, we live well in the church until we win the admiration of the pastor. But we are hyenas in our homes. That is why, when the pastor is commanding you, "Oh, precious brother Nicholas, he's my friend, so he won't mind." We have a great brother in our church. Don't you think so, brother? Brother start clapping. That woman sits in one corner saying, "If only the pastor knew." Then, when you get old, the sister will laugh. He will start repeating the words of the pastor. "Rashad, brother." What do you mean? When the pastor was saying it, you are doing like this. Is it not the same thing your wife is saying? And you are reacting. You know why you are reacting? Because you know she knows better. May God not make us hypocritical husbands. When the woman sees a thing like that, to reverence and respect becomes difficult. Even though she wants to do it, she still knows that she's dealing with hypocrites. May God help you, my brother. May God help all the husbands in the house. May God help you, my sister. May God help all the wives in the house. May He give us a Christian home. May He give us a happy home. A home that we define Christ. Your greatest challenge is that whatever you do, you are showing to the world. This is how Christ is doing. If you do contrary, and you misrepresent Christ, He will hold you responsible. May God give you wisdom. God bless you all. Shall we give the Lord a big clap for him? Shall we give another three? How many will say, "Lord, remember me?" How many will lift up their hands? And they say, "Lord, remember me in my marriage, in my homes, how I relate to my wife? Lord, remember me. Lord, I want to surrender. Lord, I want to promise you I'll be a better husband. I'll be a better wife. I'll be a better bachelor." Oh, shall we pray, shall we pray this hour? Tell the Lord something. Heavenly Father, your word has gone forth with power and authority. Let the grace of God be with us. Let the anointing overshadow us. Here are hands lifted up, Lord. We need you in this hour. And the Lord something, brother. And the Lord something, my sister. This is a serious hour. If you are here this morning, and you want to say, "Lord, have mercy upon me." Because marriage can send many people to hell. No peace at home. Because women refuse to stay in her position. Man refuse to stay in her his position. People don't want to marry according to the word of God. They want to do what they like. This morning, you can say, "Lord, I have decided to follow Jesus." Our dear heavenly Father, your word has gone forth with power and authority. Here are hands lifted up, Lord. You know the problem behind those hands. Lord, I pray that you have them, Lord. Be with them, Lord. Reveal yourself to them. Let them know you and the power of your resurrection and the revelation behind marriage. Lord God Almighty, if there is any trouble marriage here, I pray that you have mercy upon them. If there is any difficulty, maybe somebody have decided to leave a marriage right now, Lord, let her have a change of mind. Let him have a change of mind. Let the love of God be projected. Satan will cast you out from bringing confusion to houses. And we ask the Holy Ghost to have mercy upon every marriage as we thank you now in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen. Amen. Now, as we come to the ceremony, our dear heavenly Father, we commit a couple into your hands. We know your pillar of fire is here. Your angels must be here to be able to join this brother together. We commit the ceremony into your hands in the name of Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen. Amen. You may please be seated as I invite the couple to come to the pulpit. Wow! Powerful, so powerful! If you are the type that you get annoyed, the sun rises, it falls, it rises, it falls. I won't talk to her. I won't mind her. You are a jellyfish. You know jellyfish? It's a fish that have no bone inside. Hey, I won't talk to her. Meanwhile, you two, you suffer. I don't want to. I think you have heard enough. Everybody getting share. Hey, brother honorable. When the pastor say, "Brother has been very good," and your wife say, "Chiaka." Hey, let me tell you some short story. They are going to elect a pastor in the church in some village. And those who are preachers come and line up for the church to select. One pastor, wife wake up, he say, "Hey." Ah, you also pastor? Your own wife. See the form? The Suban town of here, and the Suban fire church, his own disqualify him. My friend, go down. Your wife disqualify you. I hope it will not be like that for you. Repent! And make your wife happy. And wife, make your husband happy. Oh, mama, you're named G. Ah, women, they let to their own. He married the other, yes, he married the other. Sanxing! You don't come close. Who's a jellyfish, Nidi? Amen! I salute my brother. I salute my daughter. God bless you for making this proud. When they happy like this, their pastors are happy. Their parents are happy. Their friends are happy. Their classmates are happy. Their colleagues are happy. Their god is happy. Even the dogs in the house are happy. Then me too, I go take my new suits. Then somebody taking kente. I put my bowtie. Why? Somebody is doing the right thing. Amen. We were at engagement Wednesday, a Thursday. And one family, my man make a statement. A profound statement. She say, "I want to say this." That since they started church, I have never seen Paulina come to this brother, never. Do you understand that? That's the proper way to do it. You don't touch the woman before you come to the altar. Yes. That's why he say, "We don't live by common sense." We live by the super sense. Your modding event cannot turn Bible upside down. Heaven and earth shall pass away, but this word can never pass away. And that's how we believe it here. We don't subtract, and we don't add. So the Bible says so, but as for we, our church, we don't do it like that. On the judgment day, we ask your bishop, "Who are you?" I wrote in the Bible, and you tell them, it doesn't matter. A woman should not preach, "Oh, our church, a woman can preach." Okay, you have a church. Jesus also have a church. He say, "I will build my church." And the gate of hell can never prevent it. Amen. So my brother, I congratulate you. And I want you young people to learn this word. And don't bring any other way here. You do that, your parent will be annoyed. Your friends will be annoyed. Even your boyfriend who impregnate you also will be annoyed. He called me, "No, I have many ninsen." He cross me. Even the one who ninsen you also will be annoyed. It's not a good thing at all. But this is honorable. Shall we clap for them? Amen. So there are three tests they have to pass, then I will bless this marriage. Number one, who will I ask for this woman to be the wife of this man?
Ay.
Your full name, sir?
Ay. Alaskwesi Sogbodjo.
Mister Alaskwesi Sogbodjo. You give the woman to this man.
Yes.
Has he done everything?
Yes, it's so complete.
Are you happy? God bless you, my brother. Amen. Dearly beloved, we are gathered here together in the sight of God at the face of this company to join together this man and this woman in a holy matrimony, which is commanded by Saint Paul to be honorable among all men. It is therefore not by any to be entered unadvisedly or lightly, but reverently, discreetfully, soberly, and in the fear of God. In this holy state, the two persons present come to be joined. If there is anyone here who can show a just cause, why they should not be lawfully joined together in this holy matrimony? Do you now speak? Or from here after and forever? Hold your peace. Over there, outside here, in the new building, all clear, shall we give the Lord a big clap? Amen. Face to face, and then take the flower. Amen. I will require and we charge both of you as you surely answer the day of judgment, when the secret of all house shall be disclosed. If there is either of you, there no of any impediment, why your marriage should not be lawfully joined together in this holy matrimony? Do you now confess? For be it assured unto you that any couple that are joined otherwise that God will dwell on. Yeah, marriage is not love.
There is not.
Amen.
There is not.
Amen. But dearly believing, you have considered this solemn obligation you are about to assume. And now you are prepared to enter upon safe, reverently, discreetfully, soberly, and in the fear of God, as you propose to you the marriage covenant, and you witness the same as you join your right hand together. Amen. Brother Raymond Duche, will you have this woman to be your lovely wedded wife? To live together in this holy state of matrimony? Do you promise to love and honor and cherish and support in sickness or health, in riches or poverty? And will forsake all other? And will forsake all other girls? As long as you both live?
Yes, I will.
Amen. Sister Paulina, Otumle Sogbodjo, for the last time. Will you have this man to be your lovely wedded husband? To live together in this holy state of matrimony? Do you promise to love him? To honor and cherish and support in sickness or health, in riches and poverty? And will forsake all other guys? As long as you both live?
Yes, I will.
Amen. I will require a talking. Amen. Two rings are placed on my Bible. It is sanctified by the word of God and prayer. When I look at it, you have no beginning, you have no end. Which means this marriage is until death. It is a sign. It's a talking. It's not part of the addressing. Because a ring here doesn't mean you are dressing. Because a ring here doesn't mean you address. It means I am somebody's husband. Therefore, we will give it to them. To put it on each other. And you are the witnesses. Tomorrow, when you see them without it, you have the right to question. So brother Raymond? Amen. So you put it on the woman. Shall we give him a round of applause? Sister Paulina? Shall we give a round of applause? Now join your right hand together. And put it on the Bible. And I want my fellow ministers here to come. Fellow pastors to come around as we bless them. Shall we be on our feet? As we stretch forth with our hands? To bless this marriage? Whatever you desire? The good things you desire? For your son and your daughter? Let's pour it upon them. Shall we pray? Shall we pray? Heavenly Father! Oh, we are so grateful, Lord. For this great thing you have done in our time. That brother Raymond is taking a wife. Just as you take a bride. A great mystery. Lord, we are here to bless them. To give them our right hand of fellowship. Bless them spiritually. Bless them physically. Bless them financially. Bless them every aspect of their life. Take sicknesses away from them. Let the power of God be their portion. Perfect love, that surpasses all taste, be in their house. Let this union be blessed. Let Paulina be a mother of thousands. And possess the gate of heaven with her. As we bless you with the blessings of Abraham. Receive these blessings in your home. Let your home become a room and substance, where people come to find Christ. They are your hands, Lord. They are your hands, Lord. They are your hands, Lord. As we bless them this day, in the name of our Lord Jesus Christ. Amen. And now, by virtue of my commission. To be a servant of God. Given to me by the almighty God. And with the evident fruit of my ministry. I pronounce this young man. And your woman, husband, and la, and, and, eh, wife. In the name of the Lord Jesus Christ. And the saint shall say? Amen. Shall we give them a big round of applause? Shall we all be seated? So. You are married. You. Me. Faith. Thank you, Jesus. So you. Me. Kiss. You see, he salute the father first. Let's clap for him. Your permission, sir. Ladies and gentlemen. I have the singular honor. To introduce to you. The latest couple in town. Mister. And this is. Not here. Now this day. Whatsoever therefore God have joined together. Put a sand. Can we say amen to that? Amen. Shall we be on our feet, please? If you have your handkerchief. Amen. Hallelujah! So we are finished with the spiritual side of the marriage. We are now going to the legal side. We'll be going to the conference room. To give them certificate. This is a gazette center. So that we issue certificates. On behalf of the government. And so, we will go there. This is the order. The bride will lead. The pastors will follow. And then the family members will follow. Especially those who will sign the document. And other few family members can also come with us. And then you will be singing. You'll be taking offering for them. And then we will sign the certificate. By ten minutes, we are back, and then we close. God bless you all. So I invite the soul leader to come. And take over while we go for the signing ceremony. God bless you all.
Amen.
Amen. Ready? Go! Amen! At this time, we do special offering. At this very one goes to the couples, the newly couple, amen? So whatever money you brought, if you put it in this very one, it goes directly to them, amen? So do your best and support the marriage, amen? Amen. Are you ready? Go! Amen! Amen! You may be seated. If we follow, we will not close. I don't feel like closing. But we have to close. Because one man is in a hurry. Hallelujah! God bless you all. So we are going to finish with the legal side of the marriage. So our sister is married spiritually and legally. And so we are going to issue her with the certificate. This is a certificate of ordinance. One man. One man, one wife. One man. One wife, amen? And that's what we also believe here. One man. God bless you all. But anyway, when you have done those mistakes before you come, there is a pardon for you. To continue the way you are. And teach your children never to do it again. But if you are a member here. And you marry second wife. Out. Is that right? I think I'm talking sense. God bless you all. So I want to present the certificate to our daughter. Hey Brother Ray, I beg you one minute, man. Amen! So I present the certificate to our daughter. In the name of our Lord Jesus Christ. Amen! Shall we give a round of applause? Possibly. Change your style. God bless you all. Brother Raymond, you can come back for your wife. Sorry, sir. Amen! So we thank all of you for coming. God bless you all, the families. We really appreciate you. This is where we are. And this is what we teach them. We have churches all over the world. We have churches in America. In UK. In Nigeria. Trinidad. In Dubai. We have churches all over. We have churches in Afao. Nogopo. Aguzume. Yes, Nogopo, we have a church there. Yes. Down to Kabalezuazu. To Solá, to Gushigü. The pastors are the ones sitting down. From Gushigü, from Pualugu, from Boligá, from Bono Is, Bono. We have churches all over. But we don't have the same lane. We are a different type of church. Everything is different. Our dressing is different. Our preaching is different. Our songs are different. Even our shoes are different. Hey! I tell you, our telephone is also different. Our phone, when you press God, then he add bless you. Just go to Google Map and type the message, you see? Don't type the rest. Messaging card phones. Hallelujah! So anywhere you need a truth like this, just contact us. We have church in Tikobo number one. The pastor is here. Tikobo number one, where is Black Lemon? Yeah, he's there! We have churches all over. Even in Tema here, we have churches all over. God bless you all. So now we are going to march out. Please, when you go out. There's a gift table on your left. Don't go without giving them gifts. If you don't have a gift, go there, there are envelopes there. They will write your name. And your telephone号码. They will call you to thank you. And God will also thank you. Over here, we don't do appeal for funds. Nobody should know how much you are giving. We do everything in secret. And God will reward you openly. That scripture. We do everything by scripture. God bless you all. So we are going to march out. Wednesday, six o'clock, we are here. Friday, six o'clock, we are here. Sunday, nine o'clock, we are here. So anytime you can just walk in. It's a free church. To come and listen to the truth. I thank you all ministers of the gospel who are here. God be with you as you travel back home. What do we say to Pastor Dele? One more time. Full name, Pastor Dele Adelodum. God bless you. Shall we give a big round of applause? Oh, what a gift! I believe many sick marriages are healed. In Jesus' name. You must be like Christ. Then it will not be difficult for the man to submit and reverence you as unto the Lord. And don't forget the title, expression. Expression. God bless you all. Amen! So this is the order of going. The dickies will show you how to go out. Please, don't go out just like that. They will be directing you to go line by line. So that they will not be stamping. So the bride will take lead. The bride party will follow. The pastors will follow. The family will follow. And then we're going out for photographs. Amen! God bless you all. So shall we be on our feet? As they give a call?